As in joining Alderman Parker in prayer and pledge, please.
Thank you, Father, for this day, your many blessings, your mercy and your grace. We ask you to look over the meeting here tonight that we use the wisdom that's given to us to do what's best for the citizens of Long Beach. We ask you to bless the first responders, all our city employees, their families, and our military people that guard us each and every day. For we ask it in Jesus Christ's name and his sake. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution for which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call. Patrick here. Mr. McGooey is not going to make it this evening. He got held up with work. Alderman Brown?
Here.
Alderman McCaffrey.
Here.
Alderman Johnson.
Here.
And Alderman Parker.
Present.
All right, seeing we have a quorum. All right. We have no public hearings, announcement, proclamations, and presentations. Ms. Courtney, if you would like, employee anniversary recognitions, excuse me.
So our award that we have today is going to Mr. Tim Darden. He has served the Long Beach Fire Department for 25 years, and we, the city, would just like to take a moment to recognize him. He'll come forward.
So, real quick, Tim has been, since I've been here, Tim's been a part of the fire department on a daily basis. I see he not only works daily there, but he also works with our building department. So, thank you for your service, and more importantly, we'd like to thank April for sharing you with us. Thank you, April.
He's coming, you shamed him. Okay, moving on. Mr. Tom Sawyer with our insurance renewal presentation. Real quick before Tom starts, just so everybody knows, this package that we have is on our property, not health insurance. So, Tom, what was your, sir?
All right, we have an annual renewal, and up for renewal is our property insurance, our liability insurance, our public officials insurance, our police professional, our employee practice liability. Cyber comes up at a later time, and we have our automobile coverage and the workers' comp. In looking at the, I've worked very closely with Donald and Griff in the city to kind of go over everything to make sure all of our buildings are listed properly. We haven't had a, an increase in property values in a couple of years because of the inflation and the fact that construction costs are really up, and we've seen that from the hurricane that we had and that we're dealing with in, in construction values. We elected to take a 20% increase in values of all, all the buildings. So, we're, have gone up from somewhere around $21 million in total coverage to around $26,400,000. And there's a schedule of properties in, in your documents you have there, and you can see the exact values that we have per building. In meeting with Donald and Griff and the insurance company and, and talking to them, we feel very good about the fact that the valuations are in line. They are not the highest that they could have been, but they're, they're right where the insurance company felt like they wanted. There are a couple of real positive points about the property insurance that we've had. We've been with the Chubb Insurance Group for, I know at least, maybe 15 to 18 years. So, we're very lucky. I mean, most, most cities and governmental businesses too have been making changes in, in their property carriers. So, we had the same company. We have some very unique points of our property policy that, that we see that in the marketplace that they don't have. One, we have a blanket policy. So, we're dealing with a $26 million limit, and we have a deductible per building, not on the total amount of insurance like most policies have. So, it, some of our buildings are well-made. They can stand a hurricane better than others. So, we're not looking at, at a deductible, you know, on the total schedule amount that we have there. So, we do have a rate increase in, in that, and you can see it from last year to this year. While it's, it's up, you've got to remember we've increased values, but it's, it's pretty moderate compared to what's going on in other governmental entities on the coast and other large businesses. Our police professional chief, it has no bearing on your department and their results because they've been excellent, but the national average for police, there've been a spike in claims on a national basis. So, the insurance and the reinsurance, Steve, is forced an increase in that line of coverage. On our automobile, we, we've made sure that the vehicles are in line with what the city has in their inventory. As you know, we've had a large fire truck that's been removed from the schedule, and that's, premium was adjusted off of their renewal based on the fact that we don't have that. I think y'all dealt with last meeting travelers submitting a payment for the damaged fire truck as well as some extra money for the cost of the new fire truck. So, hopefully that, that works out, and I will tell you, in, in all the years I've been in the adjustment business, travelers really treated the city well on that. Any questions that you might have?
Tom, we kind of talked about, and I want to make sure that the board understands and anybody that's listening, on this policy, and Griff, please chime in if, if needed, if I'm misspoken, is it's not an overall deductible, which other policies that we've shopped around and looked at is. This is a per-building deductible, which in the long run will save us money. And this is one of the reasons that, that we stay with this policy because it does substantially help our cause if and when we have hurricanes.
If you recall.
After Zeta, it helped us out.
It helped you by thousands of dollars.
Yes, yes.
And, you know, so we, we, the, the good news is we're very fortunate to have Chubb staying with this city because I'm telling you, it's only, only city they insure the whole Gulf.
Thank you, Mr. Sawyer. Does anybody have any questions?
We, this is within our, in line with our budget and everything.
I have to look at the line item.
Yeah, so, when is, what's the actual date on this?
October 1.
So, I do need a, a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Tom. We appreciate your work every year, sir. Okay, we're moving on. Let's see, amendments to the municipal document, docket. Okay, moving on to approved minutes. Mayor, Board of Alderman, September 5th, regular meeting, and then the September 12th recessed meeting.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving down to planning and development, we have September 4th, I'm, excuse me, September 14th, 2023, regular.
Motion to approve.
Motion?
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion? All right, hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And then item B, appeal, special use approval for Mr. Vincent Burke at Zero Klondike Road. Vincent, if you'll come on up and, and give, talk to us this evening and kind of tell us what you got going on, sir.
All right, well, it's been a long road so far. We, we're trying to bring a new childcare services facility to the, to the city of Long Beach. We have over 27 years of experience alone in childcare, plus we have two facilities with over 300 children in each facility. We like to bring that type of facility here to Ocean Spring, I mean, to Long Beach, sorry. But we definitely understand the growth is very similar and even greater at this moment from, from the St. Martin area and Ocean Springs area as well. We feel it's very similar to our, to our area over there, and we, we feel like we can produce services that fall in line with exactly what we do and with our mission statement as far as providing quality childcare in a Christian environment to these kids. Initially, we got started off with, with the design company. The design company came in full board just saying we, we should go ahead and, and somehow change the whole property to C2, which is the front two acres, the C2, the remaining 2.84 acres, rear acreage is, is R1. That was, that was shut down immediately. Then I came back to you guys and let you know that, that's not what we have to have. We really just need an additional 1.2 in order to, to make a facility that's gonna, that's gonna be, that's gonna be beautiful, pleasing to the community, and, and something that, that we all can be proud of as far as me and myself, the owner, and as far as the community to look at as well. We're, we're hoping not to build a steel, steel construction, steel facade, steel, no, no landscaping. We want to put landscaping islands in. We want to put an awning out front, and we'd like to build something that's more pleasing to the city. And, and in order for us to do that, we're going to need additional 150 feet back into the property. It's about 1.2 acres, which would, which would leave the, the additional, almost, almost 1.8 acres. Should leave that as R1 on the, on the rear of the property. We've been working hard to try to get, to make that happen. I've explained myself, I feel like in full detail to the public. I've made, I've made my intentions fully aware as far as what we, what we'd like to do with the property. So, hopefully, hopefully, we can get that from you tonight.
Okay, does anybody on the board have any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. I noticed your building, how much of your building is moving over on that 150 feet?
I mean, it's, it's a basic design at this moment because I, you know, it's going to cost, you know, between $10,000 and $30,000 to pay the design firm to, to do that, to have the complete design done and how it's going to lay out in the parking lot and drainage and all that. The guesstimate is the most it would need would be 75 of that, and then we would need playground space to the rear of that. And that was really the concern for the planning commission the other night was how much of the building would, would sit on that property. But I think there was a fear of somehow if we were to go out of business, I mean, every business somehow may, may go out of business. But as far as, as far as how we operate, this will be, this will be my 18th year doing it with, you know, for ourselves as, as our own company. It's going to be, we've done, we've done it in Ocean Springs since 2017. We, we've been in a building with our after-school program, and we turned that into a preschool and after-school, and now infant care. We built a facility over there that was $2.5 million in 2015. In 2012, we built one that was $1.25 million in St. Martin, and since then, we've added, in 2021, we added another 12,500 square feet. So, both facilities are approximately 25,000 square feet with about $200, $2.5 million in each facility, and they've been very profitable. They've been very full with waiting lists. So, we're hoping to do the same thing here. I don't, I don't see how it's going to be any differently ran or operated or profitable here in Long Beach.
I don't, I don't think you'll have a problem with locating in Long Beach and all. The problem I have is the fact you've got a commercial building that's moving over on to a R1 property that you're asking for special use. Now, special use, my understanding, I heard from you one time, it was supposed to be strictly a playground. So, you, you have moved the building over on part of the R1, and, you know, your 240 feet to begin with was, 240, I think it was.
250.
Was supposed to be zone commercial. So, your building should have stayed on your commercial zone.
I, I think there's a miscommunication here because the last meeting that you weren't, you weren't here. I explained to them exactly. I showed everybody here, including the public, that, that, that building would need to, to have that additional 75 feet. I haven't, the drawings haven't changed. They're, they're from those original drawings that I had with the Board of Alderman when I did the initial presentation.
Well, that's something we have to take a look at as the board and all because I'm not for moving the commercial building over on the R1. So, anybody got anything?
You, you said you do not have your plans or site plans or anything done, correct?
No, they're not, they're not final. This is, that's a, that's a basic concept.
But if, if you got the special use exemption in the rear for slash playground slash parking lot, could you make it work?
Absolutely, absolutely, 100%.
Keep the, I'm talking about keeping the building on the 250.
Absolutely.
Of commercial property.
If we can put playgrounds and parking in the rear, absolutely, 100%.
Well, I, I don't have a problem with that either.
I'll make that motion to approve it based on there's no permanent structure building on.
Playground would be the only structure, and you can remove that in five minutes with a bulldozer.
We just do not want a permanent building on the special use exemption, the 150 feet of R1.
I have zero disagreement if you can allow for the, for the parking lot and for the playground space to be on that additional.
Second that motion.
Okay.
Please make the motion.
I have a motion, discussion, I have a motion, two seconds.
I would like to say one other thing before we vote. We had talked to you about moving the intersection, the Egress.
Yes, sir.
To move in with a full four-way stop. I would, I would ask that you would get with our city engineer when y'all are doing your plans. Is that right?
We would love to see that happen.
Okay.
We have, in Ocean Springs on Highway 90, we have the same exact thing. Thank God it was already there when we moved in. But having, having that amount of customers come in and out every day, it's great to have it fall right in line with the four-way.
All right, thank you.
All right. Any more discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You have your special use permit, sir. Now, Vincent, you'll have to get with Mr. Gunlock with your plans and all that so that they can be checked and, and move forward on that.
Yes, sir. We'll do that. Thank you so much.
Appreciate you.
All right, moving on. Approval of docket, claims, 091923. I have a motion?
I move.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, unfinished business, contract, Andercorp Construction Management. I believe this was tabled last time. Alderman Brown had a couple of questions.
And I've got them taken care of. Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Hearing, any more discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, before we move on, because this is a, the contract with Andercorp on construction management, I would propose that we, as a board, set up a subcommittee for construction that can meet not only with the mayor but with Andercorp throughout the construction and kind of keep the rest of the board up to date. If I could get three volunteers on that.
I'll volunteer.
Got one, two, and Angie? All right, so if you'll mark it down, I have a volunteer from Alderman Parker, Alderman Johnson, and Alderman Bennett. Do we need a motion on that? Setting up a, a subcommittee? No, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, under new business, moving on. Rees Across America. Ms. Wendy, is it Jean-Franck? I knew, I'm sorry, I'm, so, thank you, thank you. If you'll come on up and tell us what you have this evening, ma'am.
Well, I represent American Legion post 1995, and we are doing our sixth year of Rees Across America where we go into Long Beach City Cemetery and place Rees on Veterans Graves. And we've been doing this with them for six years now. This will be our sixth year. We are the only city on the coast that does this, and this is very important to us to honor our veterans. We're asking permission to have a, have our ceremony on December 16th at 1300 and to have, we'll get with Mr. Culpepper and work out how to get everything set up and make sure everything's all right to go.
Awesome, so.
Make a motion to approve?
I have a motion and a second. Real quick discussion, I've been to this, I've had the privilege of being to this, and, and it's been a great program, and I encourage anybody out there that can and is willing to come out because this is definitely special, and I commend you, you and the entire group for. what y'all do.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Do I have any other discussion?
And everybody is welcome, the public is welcome.
Perfect, perfect.
Thank you.
So again, just, so I got my notes correct, December 16th at 12:00 noon.
No, we're gonna have it at 1:00.
1:00, sorry, sorry, there you go, there goes my math, sorry. We good? All right, hearing nothing else, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right. Okay, next up, Mr. Steve Tweet is here regarding our railroad crossing project that we have with MDOT. There's a letter in front of you that I'm gonna kind of let Steve talk, and then we'll have further discussion about it. Steve, thank you.
Okay, what you have in front of you is a letter that kind of commits the city to any funding, over $2.5 million for the railroad project and also an LPA 100. And I've had some discussions with MDOT, and all in, we think this is a $3 million project. So before you approve that letter and that agreement, we think you may want to have a discussion with MDOT, see if they can provide some additional funding. My understanding is the intent was they would fund the entire project. Either that or they may keep the funding the same and do some redesign to decrease the scope of the project and get it within the $2.5 million. So, I mean, you could approve those forms in front of you today, but then the city could be potentially on the hook for a half a million dollars. So we would probably recommend you table it and have a discussion with MDOT.
I recommend we table it.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion to table it. I don't, do we need, we need a vote on it? Yeah. Any further discussion?
Who or who's go in touch with MDOT?
Yeah, if Keeney will set it up, and then if you'd like to be there, we'll definitely keep you in the loop here.
If you need to participate, I'd be happy to be there.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Just as a reminder for anybody that's listening, this is a project that was brought to us through MDOT to redo all of our railroad crossings from citywide to make them more accessible for truck traffic.
Right, it'll be just, I don't know if y'all have been over to Biloxi recently, but they just did a project on Main Street that accomplished this same thing, basically improved the grade so your trucks won't get stuck and you have better opportunity for vehicles with low clearance to cross over the crossings.
And I see our police chief is really excited about it.
Yeah.
But we need to make sure it's not at a cost at all.
Exactly, and that's, that's?
Have to limit the amount that they fix.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, next, under this same project is selection of consultant of Neil Schaefer. They actually were instrumental in bringing this deal to us, and I would recommend?
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second.
Before we approve, should we meet with MDOT first, or is this something that needs?
This is, I believe this is, what this is doing is their project, and I'm open to whatever you want to do, but this is selecting them, we've already got a contract with them.
Do you want me to explain the timeline on this?
Please, thank you.
So originally, the threshold for this was under the small purchase procurement, and y'all selected Neil Schaefer to do this. Because of the timeframe of this and them swapping out some personnel, they're afraid that they're gonna go over the small procurement threshold, and so this procures it through the master list on MDOT. They're already the consultant. This just doesn't, in a different method, to make sure we meet the threshold requirements.
Now, that's?
Did I explain that correctly, Steve?
So what'll happen is if the contract goes long and you wind up in liquidated damages or something, and we have to have a supplemental agreement for additional services, that can be covered under the project cost. This will make it eligible for federal money beyond the cap. So it's basically re-selecting us.
Right.
You got a motion and a second, don't you?
No, I don't, oh, I'm sorry, I have a motion and a second.
My concern was just that if we need to pump the brakes until we meet, met, before we spend any more money and met with MDOT to make sure it was something that could, would even be plausible going forward.
Well, the thing about it, the railroad crossings have to be fixed regardless.
I don't know?
I mean, I'm all about meeting with them, but regardless, our railroad crossings have to be fixed.
This, I think what this is doing is actually covering us from having to spend money.
Gotcha.
And I totally get where you're coming from going, hey, I don't want, you want to make sure that nothing's coming out of city pockets beforehand, and I think that's smart, but I think this is saving us from spending the money.
Gotcha.
So, all right, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank y'all, thank you, Steve.
Appreciate it.
All right. Next up, contract for Max and RJ Young postage meter lease.
Approve.
I have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, number five, resignation of planning commission Ward 1, Mr. Chris Fields. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion?
Do you have anybody lined up?
That's, you gotta, don't jump ahead of me, sir, please. I'd like to extend our gratitude to Mr. Fields for his service on that board. Hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, appointment of planning commission Ward 1, Alderman Bennett?
I'm going to appoint Trey Gaddy.
Mr. Trey Gaddy, okay.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Resolution, city attorney compensation.
I move.
I have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
This is a roll call.
Oh, this is a roll call, all right. Hearing none, Patrick?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Mikey?
Aye.
Timmy? Angie?
Aye.
And Bernie, sorry, trying to keep up there. Motion carries, sorry. All right, discussion, city property on 4th Street, Alderman Brown.
So the property that we're talking about is where the old fire station was, and it's getting, there's houses being built all around it, and we, I know as a board, we've often known, had discussed about putting that property up for sale. My question first is to our attorney, do we need three appraisals? Or can we go by what the square footage is being sold around there?
I think yet, I think the statute requires you to do fair market value, and for that, I think you need more than one appraisal.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion that we have, find somebody who can do three appraisals and see what the?
And yeah, I agree, do we, auction, is it like a sealed?
It'd be a sealed bid.
Sealed bid?
Second.
I have a second first, now I have discussion. Go ahead.
All right, that's what I was asking, do we do it like a sealed bid?
Once you have the appraisals back?
You're not talking about sealed bid to do the appraisal?
No, sir, no, sir. He's fast forwarding, once we have it back?
Right.
The actual sale?
Yes, and then clearly you would have a fair market value in which to evaluate those sealed bids.
A floor.
Correct.
Got it, and it's basically the average of the three. Is that, is that the floor?
Let's make, let's get them in first and make sure we don't have to disqualify one. I don't want to get too far down that road.
Add that to the motion to go ahead and request?
I'm sorry, what?
You want to add to the motion to go ahead and reach out to appraisers?
Yes, that's, that was my motion.
And the average, the average cost right now that you're looking at is about $600 for an appraisal. Do you, do you want to put a dollar ceiling on it?
Well, I mean, we have to have this because the average piece of property over there right now is going for about $75,000 for that size lot. I've done?
No, I understand that, I understand what you're saying, but do you want to put a ceiling on the amount that we spend on an appraisal?
Well, I think we're gonna have to?
Or you just want three?
We need three, I mean?
Okay, fair enough, I was just asking.
You'll be doing it, I'm sure, huh, and trying to find out what we can do, and if it's too high, tell them we'll bring it back to the board?
Okay.
It's personal services, so you can negotiate the price with them.
Perfect, thank you, thank you. Okay, so I have a, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Yes.
All right, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number nine, discussion, bond issue, Alderman Brown.
Well, we had talked about last, during our budget workshop and approving our budget, that we have a lot of projects that we have not started, and our fund balance is getting down, and we are debt-free, correct? Or will that be in October, as far as bonds? Any?
We're debt-free right now.
So instead of using all of our fund balance, because you all know as well as I do, sooner or later, we're gonna have to use that because it's not if a hurricane comes, it's gonna be when one comes. We need to go out and try to, I'd like for Keeney to maybe come back at the next meeting with all the projects that's gonna have matching funds and see what we can come up with and get a total there, and then see where we can go from there, maybe advertising for bonds to do all the matching funds.
Can I add to that because we've worked with them in the past, maybe working with SMPDD, let them look at these projects and kind of advise on different avenues that we might go with the bond?
Sure, but I mean, we just, I mean, I kind of put a pencil to it, and I think maybe having talked to you, David, it was over, it's $1.5 million in matching funds, and I think our fund balance is, correct me if it's about $4 million right now. So we do not need to get this low because we are going to have to use that money sooner or later. I mean, I hope we don't, but it's going to happen. So, will you put, get us a list together, and at the same time, Donald, you go reach out to SMPDD?
Yep.
And we'll go from there.
That's your motion?
That's my motion.
Okay, so I have a motion to, and do you want it on the next meeting, or how do you want it?
I'll stick it up.
I won't be here next week, but I don't have to be here.
This is your project, this is your baby.
It's on the coast, baby.
Second.
All right, so I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving on, number 10, short-term rentals, Alderman Parker.
Yes, I'd like to issue a moratorium on short-term rentals right now to where we can go back and look at our procedure for what we do for short-term rentals, and right now, I think we got about 130-something that are identified. There's a lot of them, they're still working on, that hasn't been, we hadn't found them out yet to go back and prosecute them, but right now, we need to, I think we need to look at putting a stop, moratorium, to take a look at this.
What's your motion?
That's my motion.
Second with discussion.
Does the board want to consider a term of the moratorium so you could, so you can have a time to bring it back and make whatever changes if you so desire?
I think we need to put a timeline on that.
The first thing we need to do is allow for, we haven't talked to Mike or Tina, and allow, there might be some on the books for the next?
That are coming up.
That are coming up.
That have already gotten them in.
If we have an application in, do we accept that?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
Like January 1st or something, pause until then?
Patients from and after today to when?
January 1?
Because here's our, here's our problem for the public that doesn't know, we get, I think it's $500 for a VRBO. We get absolutely no taxes through that VRBO. It all goes to the tourism commission, correct me if I'm wrong?
Yeah.
That's what Alderman Parker found out.
The Coliseum and all that, so we're making no money right now, and then on top of that, we have a lot of people that's out there renting or using them for vacation rentals, and we're not finding out about them, so we're getting a lot that's not even paying a dime, so we need to address our enforcement and all that at the same time.
Correct.
And I think that would probably be a work session that we'll have to address all this.
Right.
Okay, so just to reiterate, I have a motion with a second to?
January 1st.
To put a moratorium on any new application that is not in?
After today.
After today, until January 1st of 2024. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Do we want to schedule a work session?
You want to, well, let's get the vote first, and then we'll come right back and we'll do the work session. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, would you guys like to?
Welcome, Mr. Magui.
Yep, let the record show that Alderman Magui is here. Do you guys want to go ahead and set the work session while we're still on this subject?
Yes, 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 right talk, come on.
In case it turns into the food truck, we have to have four of them.
Yes.
So if y'all want to do it on off Tuesdays, you have September 26th, you have October 10th, 24th, 31st.
Would you say, Angie, no 10th?
October 10th was good.
Is good?
October 10th is good?
Yeah, it sounds good.
Oh, okay, so if everybody's okay with it, let's do October the 10th.
Need a motion, please?
Okay, hang on, we were gonna set up some other work sessions, are there, is there anything else?
We can, we can add when those items come up. That, is that, are you adding something else?
No, I'm just, I'm just saying, we had agreed to do work sessions going forward, so what else can we add to it?
Okay, let's set this one, and then we can come back and add to that. I, I, I'm kind of confused, but I just want to make sure we're, do you have a specific?
I think she was talking about the budget.
The whole budget.
Oh, okay, got it.
And reviewing some things that was coming up.
Got it, got it, yes, you can add those at that, so let's?
We need a motion.
Motion to get to?
I have a motion and a second for October the 10th work session.
At 5:00 PM.
5:00 PM.
I can't make it.
You're killing me. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, number 11, discussion harbor leases with Alderman Fraser. What I think we need to do is I would like to make a motion or accept a motion that we go into executive session regarding the negotiation of harbor leases and a second item of possible litigation.
I move.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, let's. All right, let's...
Make a motion to come out of executive session.
All right, have a motion in a second to come out of executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
No action taken.
There's no action taken, so, all right, perfect. Moving on, departmental business under mayor's office. I have a couple things here. Okay, I have an issue in Castine Point that I'd like to get the board's opinion on. Took Mr. Muguie out there and Ms. Johnson. On one area of the neighborhood there that backs up to Old Town Garden, there's a 15-foot easement when we should've had a 25. Well, we went back, we met with the developer, and there's actually just, they've had already sold the property, the lots, and houses have been built and already been sold. So what I'm looking to do is entertain a motion that we work with the developer and the contractor on piping that ditch so that it's easier for Mike and Joe to maintain.
We had, that's something we have already talked about, correct?
Well, we just haven't taken any official action on it.
What do you think, Pete?
Old Town Garden.
Motion. I've seen it.
The Grove, excuse me, not Old Town Garden, I apologize.
No.
The Grove, I said Old Town Garden.
It isn't the Grove.
It's in between.
It's in between.
In between, yes, sir.
But we accessed it through Castine Point when we went out.
Correct, yes, sir. I referenced the wrong neighborhood, I'm sorry.
It's the ditch that we have to address, yeah.
Yes, sir.
What's your motion?
My motion is to work with them to get it covered for maintenance purposes, to make it easier.
Second. Have a motion in a second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, the next thing I wanted to bring up is in talking with David, there is, we've been working on the Third Street Sidewalk Program, and we have a, there's a deadline for a grant application of October the 2nd that we can apply for if the board is interested to finish the sidewalks from Third Street and Jeff Davis to the entrance of USM. I have a motion.
David, it's second with discussion.
Second with the discussion.
Is that a match?
Yes, there is.
Yeah, it will be a 20% match, it'll be an MDOT-style grant, like we've done several.
So, when you come up with the fees?
Okay, with David.
Get with David on that, please.
What was the location of that sidewalk?
So it's gonna be Third Street all the way to the entrance of USM. Jeff Davis going east to USM.
Is it golden here?
All right, I have a motion in a second, any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, okay. That's all I had. Moving on to personnel, Police Department, I have one transfer and one new hire.
Move.
All right, I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Fire Department, I have three promotions, four new hires.
Move.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And then C, under Library, I have one part-time resignation.
Move.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, sorry. All right, moving on, City Clerk, revenue expense report for August of 2023.
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
In a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Motion carries. Budget amendments for FY 2023.
Motion. Second.
Have a motion in a second. Hearing, any more discussion?
Clarity on that.
All right, on, let's see here.
Community Affairs, first one.
So the budget that y'all adopted for 2023 was not inclusive of that position? This is just to put it back in for the remainder of the year?
Oh, so housekeeping, they?
Yes.
Salary and benefits.
Correct, for the portion of this fiscal year that y'all filled it.
Okay, any further discussion?
So this is the budget that we're?
2023, backwards.
2023.
That we're in now.
Okay, got it.
What we approved was 2024.
Yeah.
Got it, okay.
From point A to point B.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Fire Department, Chief Skelly. Thank you, sir.
We heard anything on our appeal?
Have not.
Okay.
Have not, I'll check into that.
All right, no update on our appeal, thank you.
You talking about for the harbor?
Yes.
Okay, moving on, Police Department, inter-local agreement, Harrison County's Stone Garden Grant Program.
That's a grant that we get through the Border Patrol, and Harrison County's fiduciary for that, all the funding comes through them. There's no matching money, 76, I think, thousand, 74,000. Most of that's equipment, 50, like 54,000 is for a car and all the equipment, and the others overtime money.
Move.
No match, and it's not in my budget, so that'll have to be a budget amendment when we expend that money.
He wanted to make sure that was clear, okay. All right, so I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, assistance request for the Gulf Coast Public Safety Feed the Needy.
This is a program that's been going on for 20-plus years where at Christmas and Thanksgiving, the agencies along the coast provide meals to the poor and the elderly. We deliver them hot meals at Christmas and Thanksgiving. In the past, the casinos have done most of it, providing all the desserts and all that. Now, they've backed out last year, so there's really no funding for it, so all the cities are being asked to put in $1,500 to help continue this program on. I think we serve 100, 150 meals for Thanksgiving and Christmas each here.
In the city, yeah.
We go pick up and we deliver to them. So I'm asking that we continue that, I had it in my budget.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, just, I want to add, you know, I think this is a great thing. Not only that, is, I want to commend your department because I know it's not just the officers, most of them are bringing their families. So that part of it, you know, seeing these kids out there doing it as well, I highly, highly praise you and your department for that, and anybody else that participates in it.
Do you take donations for that?
It's a 501(c)(3). Hopefully, for next year, we'll put together a fundraiser. Yeah, we're gonna try, but we always.
Well, I was gonna nominate everybody on the board to kick in $100 each. I'm retired, by the way.
Hope it's better than the trash pickup challenge.
I was in the bed sick, sir, but I didn't see any pictures of you. And I'll stay true to my agreement, if you were there, I'll buy you lunch, because that's what you're looking for. Yeah, all right.
Pimby was riding with me.
All right, see y'all at McDonald's tomorrow. All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, all right. Engineering, sorry, letter of agreement, water and wastewater master plan with Overstreet and Associates.
Motion.
Second with discussion.
David, can you update us on this a little bit better, or?
Absolutely, you know, with the ARPA funds that were received as a reimbursement for the projects that y'all had already completed, ARPA came through and awarded that money to you. This was one of the projects that you guys desired to complete, which would really be good for the city. It'll update your kind of maps and asset list of the water and sewer system. It'll get you in a position where future funding applications, you'll be able to kind of pull it right off the low-hanging fruit. Here's the next project that we want to pursue for this funding application.
So, and if I can, we, back when they brought us the priority list, and I was, to start off with, I was against, hey, why do we need a study when we could be using this money to do it? But, as I understand, and through other grants that we've done, once we do this, it's easier for us to be accepted for these grants. So spending this money is not just a waste.
This is ARPA money.
This is ARPA money, yes, sir.
This is ARPA money, straight out of water and sewer budget.
Got it, yes, sir, not out of the general fund.
So you need a motion? Yes. Motion.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Contract, Lang Avenue Pump Station Improvements, Overstreet and Associates.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Addendum for Pineville Road Sidewalk Phase 2, and do I need to take these individually? Yeah, let's just take them individually, Phase 2. David, this is just a, because of the grant, am I correct?
Because of the MDOT process, we need a time extension to make sure our contracts are all up to date. As they're continuing to work through the right-of-way acquisition process, that's lengthy. So you run out of time, so you do a time extension.
So, so just to reiterate that that project on Pineville Road to extend those sidewalks has been in motion for a while now, and we're just working through the process to complete that to Railroad, am I correct?
Yes.
It'll get us all the way to Railroad, that's right.
Okay, for the people that are asking about sidewalks.
Move.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, and Item D is the same thing, but it's Pineville Road Sidewalk Phase 3.
Move. Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving on, Public Works. All right, thank you, Mr. Glass.
I've got a question for Mike. The asphalt contract, when are we go know about it?
We opened those today.
Okay, and could you relay maybe to Joe or yourself? I'd like, I talked to David about maybe a Mitchell Road update since we got the asphalt prices. That would be on South Mitchell.
Yeah, absolutely.
And give us a kind of next board meeting or something. I just got, I've got people calling me, asking me when, you know, because all the drainage has been done and everything, and I know Mike's having problems with people putting stakes out, so give me a timeline.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Perfect, thank you, Mike. Recreation, Bob Hall.
We're good.
Thank you, sir. All right, Mike Gunlock with the Building Department.
Good.
Good, all right. Hey, Harbor, you good? All right, thank you, sir, we appreciate it. Community Affairs, Ms. Courtney. City landscaping.
Thank you.
What we get? Thank you, ma'am.
So the land that's in between City Hall and the library, I purchased some poles to go into the ground, and then I purchased those ornaments that you see on those pictures. And I just wanted to get y'all's permission to put the stakes, the poles, in the ground that are 10 feet tall, and then hang lights, and then the ornaments for Christmas.
Absolutely.
I think that'd be nice.
Second.
You made the most of it?
He did first, second, and third.
No, that's what a city nearby does during the summer, but.
So are we gonna have, for our holidays, are we gonna have on our poles? Or are we gonna put what you was trying to do, I think, at the last meeting?
Yeah, those will go up during November and Christmas.
Well, okay, so we're not putting any Christmas things on the poles either?
We don't have any, we don't have any, and then we don't have money for it, nor.
I thought we had some.
Have to go on the poles?
Not on the poles.
Ever done that?
We have the city ones, and then we have USM, and then the high school.
And then what?
Learn something every day.
What Sheldon does down in the town green.
Yeah.
Right, well, I have.
I'm talking about the banners.
Yes, we don't have a Christmas banner.
I got you, okay.
Yeah, right here.
Yes, it is, good job.
Got a motion in seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Courtney, upcoming events.
So the city is doing a fall sidewalk sale. It's throughout the city at participating businesses, and it's this Saturday. They'll be having sales, or they're featuring fall items, like fall cocktails, fall desserts, and then Cruisin' the Coast.
What are the hours?
Just whenever the business is open. Yeah, so it's at the participating businesses and during their normal hours.
Okay.
And then Cruisin' the Coast is coming up on October 2nd. The parade's at 5:30, and then Long Beach Live is gonna be on that Friday at 7:00.
The Barstool Cowboys.
Yep.
Is that who it is? So also, while we're talking about Long Beach Live, the square-body truck clubs will have a two-day meet at the town green from, oh, probably lunchtime till 10 o'clock on Thursday night and Friday night. For Thursday and Friday, and they're anticipating, there will be some vendors, there'll be some food trucks there, and they're anticipating, I know it's a big jump, but anywhere from 100 to 300 trucks. So, everybody come out, because that will be nice. It's their first event here, and the way they are talking to us, they want to make this an annual event at the same time every year.
When is it?
It's the Thursday and Friday of Cruisin' the Coast.
Oh, of Cruisin' the Coast.
Just to clarify, that's a private event.
Yes.
We have no control over that. We just had an issue.
And it's not sponsored by Cruisin' the Coast at all.
And the few guys, there's a few guys that are kind of behind that that are actually Long Beach boys.
Yeah, we've been meeting, me and Donald's been meeting a couple times with them, and they're very sincere. So it's gonna be a good, I think it's gonna be a good setup.
Yes.
Mikey, isn't there something in Harbor that Friday night?
There's a concert on Monday.
I think there's a truck showing in Harbor Friday night.
Is this coming Friday?
No, the Friday before.
I have no idea.
Let me see what data I have.
That's not part of the Cruisin'?
No. They have these pop-up cruise-ins during Cruisin' the Coast, but it's not sponsored by Cruisin' the Coast, and like Chief says, it's not sponsored by ours.
The 29th.
Okay.
Chill out in the park, it's in Harbor, 6 to 10.
Okay, that's actually before Cruisin'.
Yeah.
Perfect, all right.
Oh, and then Taste of Long Beach is on Thursday, September 28th, at the Senior Center.
Taste of Long Beach, September 28th. 5:30 at the Senior Center. Perfect, thank you. All right, moving on, Item 12, Derelict Properties, 625 West Old Pass Road, Alderman McCaffrey.
Yes, this property has been sitting empty for many years. Nobody has lived in it a long time, no power, no water, anything. The owner actually lives in Florida, but he just allowed somebody to move into this house. Still has no power, no water, anything. We don't know what to do at this point legally, how do we get them out of there? Just sitting there with no power or anything.
And it's a health, Mike, it's a health department issue, first of all. You can't live in someplace without any plumbing and.
The city ordinance says you're supposed to have water.
Right.
Don't have that power, but you gotta have water.
Well, yeah, you've got plumbing and sewage.
Correct.
And another issue, the neighbor has them running water hoses over to the house, to a separate piece of property. What can we do legally to the neighbor for providing city water to them when they don't have a tap?
Well, I think if you address the person in the house, you don't have to worry about the neighbor.
And we fix that problem.
Get the person out of the house, and the neighbor will go away.
Correct.
But I mean, he can't live there without active, hooked up, city water and sewage.
I think, did you not tell me one of the neighbors called the owner of the property, and he said, "I'm not worried about it," or something to that effect?
We have spoken with the owner.
Yes.
And the people that live there, because they're stealing power, they got power from next door, too, an extension cord. And the owner's like, "Leave them alone, they're in there, they're fixing it up for me." I mean, it was nasty, they were nasty about us harassing them. I talked to the power company, and it's not, it's not a problem for them because the meter next door's, I mean, they're getting paid for whatever power they use.
Can you make sure an officer is available when Mike goes and cites this? Thank you.
Are we gonna be able to just go over and tell them they got to go? I mean, how?
I don't know what your ordinance is.
But we need to call the property owner. So if I can get with you, maybe tomorrow, we can call the property owner, just tell him what's fixed happened. Because I got the same story that they were gonna repair the house, and I told him, "You gotta have a dumpster, you gotta have permits," and I, "Oh, we're gonna have it." And that he hadn't done anything, but he's living in there with water and power from the neighbor.
They can't do whatever it is the owner is alleging they're either doing or going to do without the proper permits, and they can inhabit the house according to our ordinances and the health department without proper utilities. So cite those ordinances and do an eviction notice.
I think the question was, can we kick them out immediately for that, or?
Or do you need 30 days?
We have to declare, come here and declare it and all that.
You and I answer that question in the morning for the chief.
Okay.
But that's what I'm thinking, without, you know, without proper utilities. City doesn't have to let them occupy, it's, you know.
I'll come get with you in the morning, and we'll see if we can call this guy. I'll come get with you in the morning, and we'll see if we can call this guy again. Your phone, maybe he'll answer.
It's a health hazard, it's all kind of violations.
Okay.
Okay. Move forward with that tomorrow.
All right, we have that report from city attorney.
Nothing else.
Thank you, sir. All right, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Whoa, I got a, I got a.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask David a couple updates on the water sewer lift station there at Pineville and Railroad.
Yes, sir, yeah, that project's really going well, the force main's in place, it's, at this point, we're waiting on the pumps and control panels to be ready and to be delivered, and he's, there's not much left to do until the pumps are in place. You can't transfer sewer over to that station, so we're, I think that he's looking at the mid-October to late October before those pumps and control panels can be delivered.
But, but I believe from his meetings, he was holding on to them, and once they're delivered, they're going straight into the ground, correct?
Absolutely.
It was not a holding.
I mean, he's ready for them, as soon as they're delivered, he'll be putting them in, getting them ready, and then he'll be transferring sewer into that new station and making it all operational.
All the rest of it on Nicholson's been tied in, though, right, they're ready for it?
Absolutely, I think it was tied in just recently, the last couple days or last week, I believe.
Friday.
What's the, what's the story on our road for the Quarles House? I noticed they're doing a lot of.
Yeah, it's, it's, construction is proceeding, I mean, it's, they're, they're not behind schedule or really ahead of schedule, it's just underway.
Okay.
No major issues that I'm aware of, I think things are going okay. We're having some question about a manhole that's on the job, we thought we were just going to put a casting on it, and a new casting, bring it up to grade. We're wondering now if we want to modify that, we've been having some discussions with Public Works about that, so.
Well, now, we're going to cover that ditching all through there, right?
Yeah.
That's what all the pipe and everything there for.
That's right, the ditch that's right there next to those properties on the east side of the road will be culverted, yes, sir.
I've been trying to get by to see y'all, but I've seen the opportunity to ask you now, so. That's all I had. Motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, sorry.